Good evening, the time is now 7:00 PM and I would like to call our regular session for October 20th to order. Before we proceed with approval of our agenda, we're going to have a moment of silence.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, Vice Chairwoman, Board Members, Executive Cabinet and our guests. Tonight, I would like to begin with a moment of silence for one of our RCPS family members we have lost recently. Specifically, we remember Yorami Ortega Chavez, a student at Heritage High School and the Rockdale Career Academy. Prior to high school, she attended J.H. House Elementary and Edwards Middle School. We send our sincere condolences to her family and friends and ask that you keep them in your thoughts and prayers. And let's observe a brief moment of silence. Thank you.
Next is our inspiration from Hightower Trail. Feel free to adjust the microphone to your height.
Somebody said that it couldn't be done, but he, oh. Uh, hello, my, good, good evening, my name is Amelia Bean and I am a fifth grader from Hightower Trail Elementary School.
Good evening, my name is Janet Iman and I'm a fourth grader from Hightower Elementary School.
It could, it couldn't be done by a guest. Somebody said that it couldn't be done, but he with a chuckle replied, "That maybe it couldn't, but he be one who wouldn't say so till he tried." So he buckled right in with a trace of a grin on his face, if he worried, he hid it. He started to sing as he tackled the thing that couldn't be done and he did it.
Somebody scoffed, "Oh, you'll never do that, at least no one ever has done it." But he took off his coat and he took off his hat and the first thing we knew, he had begun it. With the lift of his chin and a bit of a grin, without any doubting or quit it, he started to sing as he tackled the thing that cannot be done and he did it.
There are thousands to tell you it cannot be done, there are thousands to prophesy failure.
There are thousands to point out to you one by one, the dangers that await to assail you.
But just buckle right in with a bit of a grin, just take off your coat and go to it.
Just start into singing as you tackle the thing that cannot be done and you'll do it.
Thank you so much. Next, if you'll all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Have a motion in second to adopt the agenda, all in favor, raise your hands, please. Motion carries unanimously. Next is our presentation, school presentation from Lorraine Elementary.
Hi, good evening Chairwoman North, Vice Chairwoman Brown, Superintendent Dr. Oates, members of the board and all of our guests. I'm Susan Norton, I am the proud principal of Lorraine Elementary School. And in keeping with spirit for the month of October, which is Bully Prevention Month, we wanted to share with you the practices that we have going on this year, which incorporate our PBIS, SCL and Olveus bullying program. And we're going to do this with a video.
Hello, everyone, I am Alexandra Mitchell, System Principal. And my name is Gloria Buchanan and I'm the school counselor at Lorraine Elementary School. We would like to share with you all a little bit about our PBIS framework and how we utilize it to support bullying prevention. One intervention or support is the use of the Olveus Bullying Prevention Program. And another is our tiered level of support for social and emotional learning for staff and for students. So without further ado, Gloria, roll that beautiful being footage. Okay, Ally, first up, we have Mrs. Callie Sadler. She will share a bit about her role at Lorraine and provide information about the Olveus Bullying Prevention Program.
Hi, everyone, my name is Callie Sadler and I'm the Prevention Intervention Behavior Specialist for Lorraine Elementary School. I also serve on Lorraine's SCL, PBIS and Olveus teams. After being trained last May, Lorraine has started fully implementing the Olveus Bullying Prevention Program this school year. We have intertwined the Olveus curriculum into our current PBIS framework and SCL interventions, specifically our classroom morning meetings. We also have already had our kickoff pep rally event to further introduce the program to staff and students and make them aware of our school bullying rules. October is National Bullying Prevention Month. In order to bring awareness and recognize this, we are holding a Stand Up To Bullying poster contest this month. And we are emphasizing bullying prevention in both our SCL specials class and morning meetings this month. Over the next few slides, you will see a few pictures and videos showing some of these initiatives.
I'm so glad to be a part of this wonderful school. Me too, it is an honor. And now let's talk about social and emotional learning. At Lorraine, we care about the social and emotional well-being of our staff and our students. We provide Tier One SCL instruction through our specials classes, Tier Two instruction through conflict resolution and peer mediation through our counseling program. Gloria? Built into our master schedule, it's time for Community Circle, which is a research-based practice to build community. During Community Circle time, students and teachers focus on the council standard. Students also participate in monthly counseling sessions with me to build personal, social skills that support academic success, career exploration and positive behaviors. Here's a video reel of some of the things. We hope you enjoy.
Hello, my name is Ms. Ava Scale and I am the SCL special teacher here at Lorraine Elementary. My role is not only to develop the minds and hearts of our students through social and emotional learning, but also of our staff. One of the things that I do to continue to nurture our positive school culture is provide a monthly article that outlines the most common trends in SCL when it comes to educators globally, but also here at Lorraine. This year, I shared some strategies on avoiding teacher burnout and ideas on how to positively shape student life. I also facilitate the parent workshops to reinforce what we do here at the school level. One example is our upcoming Thanksgiving Family Luncheon, where we will actively teach families how to engage in family circle discussions similar to our more community morning circles. For me, it's always about that all-in-all win mentality. At Lorraine, we continue to nurture a positive growth mindset for all, so we can grow each other and our lion cubs. And I am so proud to be a part of the team.
Hi, my name's Liam Walker, I'm telling you about why I learned the LCL class. So while in the LCL class is what to do, how to do with bullying. So the first thing, so the first thing we learned is what to do when you see somebody bullying. Do you go, do you stand there and watch him get bullied, watch the person get bullied? Or do you go get help to, um, to help the kid that's getting bullied? What you, what you should do is help, help the kid that's getting bullied. Cause you don't want this to keep on going, 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 gone and this becomes more of a problem. So what you want to do is you want to go to adult, you want to go to adult and then you tell adult what's happening, adult handles it from there. And what I learned for myself is be kind, be kind to others. Cause if you, cause if you be kind to others, you, you be friends, you be friends with them longer. And they don't, and if you're not kind to them, they will just stop being friends with you, you have no one to hang out with. So that's why I like, I like to be friends, I like to be kind to my friends. So I can keep them as my friends and not, and I have no offense at the end of the day because I'll be mean to them.
Hi, my name is Savannah and at the beginning of my, of the school year, I learned how to prevent bullying. I, I learned how to prevent bullying by telling a teacher about if somebody's bullying and protect somebody that's being bullied or stand up for yourself. Also, you can, uh, if you, if you bully someone, you probably have something hard going on in your life. And if you bully someone, it's wrong because you can get in trouble for bullying. Again, this is Savannah Fucker.
SCL is not only for our students here at Lorraine, it's also for our staff. Since the beginning of the year, we've been provided with ways how we can use the time for our own social, emotional health as well. One of the strategies that I find very, I actually used it a little while ago today, is the hand. Five finger, you kind of think and bring in and out, in and out. I'm getting relaxed already. So it just really puts you and re-centers yourself where you can refocus, regroup. It's super easy, very useful, highly recommended. And it's just things that we do here at Lorraine so that our staff can also just bring it back.
So in our classrooms, we do a community circle, which has to do with SCL and everything. And I've seen a huge improvement in just the community feel in my classroom. They really have started to trust each other, they have a safe place to bring up anything that they feel is weighing on their minds. And they are really showing a lot of respect toward each other that I don't think might have been there without our community circles.
Did your chair explode? Did you? Well, you know, Lorraine, we just make things happen. Welcome back, we hope that you have enjoyed this short drive through our journey to building a community through our PBIS frameworks. We are still walking along this path and seeking feedback from our staff, students and other stakeholders to continue to improve and maintain a positive, enjoyable teaching and learning environment. As the PBIS coach, since the onset of PBIS at RCPS, I can truly say that we have grown and we will continue to grow. You're definitely right about that Gloria, we are growing. So to close out, let's take a look down memory lane as we celebrate our staff and students and have tons of fun while doing it. Ba da ba ba ba. Loving it.
I do have here with me tonight, three of the members from our teams. Ms. Callie Sadler, our PNI specialist, Ms. Ally Mitchell, my assistant principal, and Ms. Gloria Buchanan, our school counselor.
Thank you so much ladies, y'all are doing important work. So thank you so much and we enjoyed the video. All right, next up is presentations to the board and public for Ms. Ball. Thank you, good evening, good evening, good evening Chairwoman North, Vice Chair Brown. I see you're going to join us with Dr. Oates down here, Board Members and guests. We're glad you're here with us this evening. And I'm going to ask you to excuse me, I have a bad knee, so I am going to sit while I read doctor's orders. To you all are my witnesses, I'm behaving. So Dr. Oates, I would like to hand you the certificate of our first. So students, when I call your name, I'm going to read a little bit about each group, I have four groups this evening. And when I call, students, when I call your name, if you'll come up and you can receive your certificate from Dr. Oates and Vice Chairwoman Brown. And after, at the end of each group, we'll take a group photo up front. Parents, I will take a photo, we'll put it on our social media, on our Facebook, Twitter and Instagram. You are also welcome to come up behind me and take all the photos you want as well. So with that, we will start with National History Day. Is Mitchell here? Mitchell, are you here? Okay, perfect. Mitchell's our only recipient in this category, so if he wasn't here, I was going to move on. National History Day is a nonprofit education organization that offers year-long academic programs that engage over half a million middle and high school students around the world annually in conducting original research on historical topics of interest. The largest National History Day program is the National History Day Contest that encourages more than half a million students to conduct historical research on a topic of their choice. Students enter these projects at local and affiliate levels, with the top students advancing to the national contest at the University of Maryland at College Park. Tonight, we congratulate a student from General Ray Davis Middle School who received the Georgia Junior Outstanding Affiliate Award and placed 10th in the nation for his junior individual documentary, The Lost Hetch Hetchy Valley. For those who might not know, Hetch Hetchy is a valley in the northwest corner of Yosemite National Park. Please join me in congratulating Mitchell Flader. Congratulations. I couldn't see behind me, did they, did y'all get pictures? Come on, okay. All right, y'all have to help me if there's somebody behind me with pictures, I can't, can't turn and see behind me very easily. Okay, Dr. Oates, the next group? Thank you. All right, this next group, we will recognize for a presidential achievement. They are state winners in the Jimmy Carter Postcard Contest. These students are art students from General Ray Davis Middle School. This year's theme was Plains, Georgia, We're Nuts About Our President. There were over, over 2,050 entries and this group took home first place, sixth grade, second place, seventh grade and third place, seventh grade. When I call the students up to get their certificates, I will also direct your attention to our screens to see their winning postcards. Winning first place for sixth grade, congratulations to Eleanor DiFrancesco. Winning second place for seventh grade, congratulations to Cameron Jeffries. And winning third place for seventh grade, congratulations to Morgan Brantley. That's our group. Okay, what's it look like behind me? We're good? Congratulations. Thank you. All right, Dr. Oates, our next group. And I will tell you, I know Katie King, the art teacher at Davis Middle School, was quite distraught that she couldn't be here, she is always here when her students are here. But it is the Davis Specialty Open House this evening. The ATL Airport Art integrates art into the daily fabric of Atlanta Airport for the benefit of passengers and employees. The art program commissions site-specific artwork, produces and curates rotating exhibits and manages performances and art programming. With over 1,000 artworks in one of the largest public art sites in the southeast US, there is plenty to explore. There are currently three youth art roading exhibits at the Atlanta Airport. The following students will have their artwork displayed in the Youth Art Gallery at Hartsfield-Jackson International Airport Terminal T. So if you're going through Terminal T, you'll have to stop, from October through January. Each one is a landmark found in Georgia. You can enjoy the artwork on the screen as I call their names. Tonight, we congratulate Michelle Aguilar. And you can see Michelle did Stone Mountain. Next, Amelia Anderson. And Amelia drew Midtown Atlanta. Next, Justin Gray. And Justin did the Okeefinooki Swamp. Next, Poppy Harris. And you can see a great drawing of Savannah, Georgia. Our next artist, Michaela McCranee. And that's a beautiful drawing of High Falls State Park in Jackson, Georgia. Our next artist, Zaleka Emlatwa. Drawing the fabulous Fox Theater. Next, Alani Snowden. And that is Graves Mountain in Lenkington, Georgia. And our final artist, Kaylee Williams. And Kaylee drew the state Capitol. So now you have to smile for a long time because I have to get a picture. Keep smiling, big smiles, come on. All right, now hold it, I need a picture. Okay. Big smiles, one, two, three, congratulations. Thank you. Okay, and our final group consists of students and advisors from two of our schools, but we're going to combine them into one group. And they are FCCLA. The Rockdale Career Academy and Rockdale County High School joined more than 7,000 Family, Career and Community Leaders of America, or FCCLA, student members, advisors and guests at the San Diego Convention Center in the end of June, beginning of July, to participate in the annual National Leadership Conference. The conference provided RCA and Rockdale County High School FCCLA members opportunities for listening to inspiring speakers, attending youth workshops, competing on the national level and networking with other youth leaders. The theme of this year's conference was Make It Count, which inspired attendees to share how they make it count while exploring career opportunities, developing leadership skills and growing personally while making a difference in their families and communities. Tonight, we recognize the following students for their achievements. And I will call their achievement and then students, I will call your name if you'll come up. And when you get your certificate, this is a little bit of a bigger group, so when you get your certificate, if you'll come stand at the center in front of me. Our first student was the Georgia FCCLA Vice President- Our first student was the Georgia FCCLA Vice President of Programs from Rockdale County High School, Isabella Powell. Our next student placed 12th in the nation and earned a silver medal for Public Policy Advocate Level 3, also from Rockdale County High School, Alana Stanton. Our next student earned a bronze medal in the category Fashion Design Level 3 from Rockdale Career Academy, Sailor Brody. Our next three students all placed first in the nation and earned a gold medal in the category Interior Design Level 2. The following three students are from Rockdale Career Academy, Amani Barber, Melissa Orozco, and Sierra Thomas. The following three students placed sixth in the nation and earned a gold medal in the category Interior Design Level 3. These three students are also from RCA, Kendall Oglesby, Brianna Roach, and Natavia White. And I would like to recognize our FCCLA advisors, and I know Lydia could not be here with us tonight, but Lydia Chirilla from RCA is one of our FCCLA advisors. Let's give her a hand. Also from RCA, an FCCLA advisor, Shannon Haug. Our FCCLA advisor from Rockdale County High School was recognized as a Master Advisor among 34 2022 Master Advisor recipients awarded nationwide, DJ Youngblood. Looking good. Keep smiling, keep smiling. Congratulations. That concludes my recognitions.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is a recess so that we can all congratulate our reward recipients. So we'll take a brief recess.
Sorry I dragged you. Congratulations.
She moved on to the final mission. So we're praying.
Yeah, and that's the thing, they recommended her for the positive scholarship, but that's the same thing that was vibing, so she chose to try to question. So we're praying that it comes to us. But, yeah, because if you get one of your souls that you pick and they pick you, you have to go, you know? So, like, it shouldn't be that way, but... Yes, I don't know why she didn't want to do Magnet, but she's into everything and stuff. It's like... Absolutely. Right? Already? Really? Oh, nice, right, okay. Don't move, yeah, let me back down.
Congratulations. Okay, I'll call the business back to, our meeting back to order. Next is recognizing visitors for comments. We do have a couple of visitors who would like to address the board. Before we do, let me read our policy on that. This is the time when we allow citizens three minutes to address the board. Please feel free to submit any documents to the board. We do not normally address any concerns tonight, but we ask the administration to address your concerns and provide you an appropriate response. If your topic involves personnel matter, or if you contend that your legal rights have been violated, we have specific grievance procedures for these matters. We respectfully ask that you refrain from making threats, personal attacks, or rude or slanderous remarks, or becoming boisterous. First is Ms. Pamela Brooks. Feel free to come up to the board and, yeah, use the mic and move the mic as needed.
The hours for the, no, this registration, I wanted to know where the new JH House was, and I didn't know. And I looked it up in the website like a couple months ago, didn't tell me, and I just wanted to thank somebody. I was doing my program, and she helped me with the program. And I just wanted to see her new facility. I see all the new ones here, not to bother her, but just see, you know, she must be happy that she has a new facility. I wanted to see that. And I came to the office, and it was locked before five. And I, you know, four, it was like, I don't know, maybe three or four, and it was locked in the hour. I don't know if it's closed because of the meeting or not. That's one. And then the second one is transportation. And I know one or two schools have, like the middle schools, because of the time, but my son, the bus to his high school didn't show up. So I think, you know, the middle school I can understand, but now it's, you know, trickling down to the high school, and it causes problems because I have to find a ride and, you know. So, and I don't know if you can address those, if you need time.
Someone will follow up with you. Thank you so much. Next is Ms. Avi Williams. I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
You did a great job. Greetings. Today, I wanted, for the past six months, I've been involved in the county side of where our tax dollars are going, and I'm constantly being reminded that 80% of those dollars land here. And so, one of the issues that I've heard over the past six months when it comes to new development, we're doing a lot of, there's a lot of growth going on in Rockdale County, and a lot of times developers are coming to the Planning Commission as well as to the Board of Commissioners, and they're saying that the schools are fine, and that they've done the studies, and that there is no capacity issues. And so, I went behind the developers to talk to some administrators, and I got a different story. So I'm not sure where these developers are getting the information from, and if that's accurate. So we kind of need the BOC and the school board to come together and decide what's in the best interest of the county. Is this growth that we're experiencing, is it healthy growth for Rockdale County? Are the schools okay? Can the teachers handle the load? The question that I asked the administrator might have been a little different than the question that the developer asked. The developer might have been asking the number that the fire marshal put on the building when they built it. However, I asked, could Rockdale County High School get, take, handle another 300 students? And the administrator said, no, they're dealing with a lot of COVID issues, mental health issues, disciplinary issues. And I think we need to all be on the same page. You know, all of our representatives need to be on the same page about, can we handle the influx of growth that we're experiencing in the county? Because then, that way, it helps the developers to know, hey, this area has already been zoned for four or five other new developments, and they can't handle, we can't handle anymore. So that's one of the things I wanted to bring to you guys before my time is up. And you can direct me, like, educate me, I'm open for that. I really don't know. This is my first time up here at the school board, so I don't know. But that's just what I'm learning on the county side. The second thing is I live in Old Salem Township. You guys have a property over there by Peaks Chapel Elementary. It's adjacent to our community, it's adjacent to the school, it's overgrown, that area. And some of the neighbors said that they've tried to contact you guys, but it has trees that are falling, people that's dumping on that property. And so, if you guys need to know exactly where that's at, I can let you know after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next item on the agenda- Our next item on the agenda is Superintendent's Cabinet Updates. We'll start off with the Office of Student Support Services with Dr. Smith Dixon.
So, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to share a few quick updates tonight. Do you want to advance for me? Awesome. So one thing I would like to follow up, as you may recall, earlier this school year, I shared some stats from the Office of Student Registration, the Student Registration Department. And so we are excited to share a few quick facts since July twenty twenty-two, that we approved over two thousand six hundred and thirty-three applications. It is important to note that each application could include multiple students. And so in this particular instance, we have enrolled three thousand six hundred and fifty-two new or returning students to Rockdale County Public Schools since July twenty twenty-two. And then also, in addition to that, we are currently processing about thirteen hundred annual enrollment applications. And actually, in talking with the staff today, that number is already a lot lower. And so that's a lot of progress, it's very different than the stats you saw earlier when we talked about four thousand outstanding, um, annual enrollment, um, applications. And so they are working fast, and they're working furiously. And yes, Rockdale County Public Schools were continuing to grow. And so another thing I wanted to point out this afternoon is just as a reminder, that there is a rigorous process for student enrollment. We have very limited flexibility with what goes into that process. It really is driven by the state board rule, the state law. And so you see on the left, my left side of the screen, it gives you a list of required documents. And so where you see that arrow, it's very important, because the very first part of that process is to determine who will be the registering parent. And I know that sounds very, very simple, but you're going to see in a minute that could be very complex as well. And so when we talk about who the registering parent will be, it's a very complex decision, because there's a lot that goes into that particular process. With the screenshot that you see here as just one example, the registering parent has to make a tough decision, who can have access to the student. And so, for example, I can say as the registering parent, that if I cannot be reached, you are welcome to call Heather, Heather, to pick up Mason. Or I can make a decision that you can call Jim as an emergency contact, but please do not let Jim pick up Mason. And so those are all the decisions that that registering parent is required to make. It is not a requirement to have more than one guardian associated with an application, but if we do have more than one guardian, it's our responsibility to be able to clearly decide who the enrolling guardian is. So for example, by default, I live in the home with my husband, we have multiple students. And so when we submit the application, by default, I'm submitting the application, because it's typically what I would do. I'm signing the application, so technically I'm the enrolling guardian. It does not mean that my husband doesn't have rights, but it does mean that if it comes down to very particular disputes or differences in opinion, Rockdale County Public Schools must be able to identify which guardian, which parent that they're going to listen to. So you're going to hear me say a couple of times during this short presentation, I'm not an attorney, and I don't play one on TV, no, sorry Santana, and our intent is not to turn our schoolhouse into a courthouse. Unfortunately, there's lots of diversity in our communities, and so there are lots of things that come out of that particular process. And so as you're looking at that screen, you're going to see checkout exceptions. And so if I choose to say, please don't let Sandra pick my child up, what happens is it translates that when you're looking at my child's file in Infinite Campus, you're going to see a code that will say checkout exception. And so what does that mean? That means that when that particular individual shows up and goes through the checkmate system, it's going to alert the front office staff that there is a checkout exception, and that particular person cannot have access to that child. Sounds very simple, but it's not quite so simple. Remember what I told you, the registering parent has to make that decision, and sometimes a registering parent makes that decision that they would rather not have someone have access to the child who probably, in an ideal world, would have access to the child. And so let me lay this foundation, it's really all about the reality that there is an expectation based on compulsory attendance laws, that students between the ages of six and sixteen must be in school, period. The bottom line is, we learned from dealing with COVID nineteen, that school is probably the safest place for most of our students. And so as we're thinking about this, we're always asking, and Santana, we're right through the door with each other, we're always thinking about, what is our responsibility based on the law? We're always thinking about, what is the right thing for the child, and then what's reasonable for the school? Because again, we're a schoolhouse, not the courthouse. And so as you are looking at this, the bottom line is, who has the responsibility to register a child? It really could be any of us, right? So it could be the parent, it could be a guardian, or it could be what's identified as an other person. And so even if you find yourself in a situation where all your kids are grown, they're out of your house, but somehow you end up with a child in Rockdale County, within your control, sitting in your house between the ages of six and sixteen, then it is your responsibility to ensure that that child is enrolled in school. The child does not have to automatically be enrolled in Rockdale County Public Schools, you can be enrolled in public school, private school, or homeschool. And so just a few expectations, what is a parent? We all get it, it's the biological parent, it's the biological father. It gets very tricky when you are talking about a guardian. So a guardian could be a person that's been court-appointed or approved to be the guardian, you could have temporary guardianship, you could have permanent custody or guardianship, or you could have really what I'd like to say, a makeshift effort with an affidavit. So I can say to Pam, Pam, it's going to be extremely difficult for me for the next six to eight months, I'd really like to sign this affidavit and allow you the opportunity to help me with my kids. And because Pam is a Rockdale resident, she takes that affidavit, and she has the responsibility to help ensure that my children are in school. Now, does that mean that I automatically don't have my rights? That's not what that means. I still continue to have my rights as a parent, unless those rights have been terminated through the court system. It does mean that when Pam enrolls my child into school, Pam is the what? She becomes the registering parent. And so hopefully, we have a great relationship, and she makes decisions that are going to be in the best interest of taking care of my child, and including me in that process. Sometimes that happens, and sometimes that doesn't always happen. And so there are a number of ways that we make available on our public policy webpage. It's very clear, in an ideal world, a child would always be with mom or dad, mom or dad would always ensure that the child is enrolled in school, we're not in an ideal world. And so the best that we can do is to ensure that the, the law is inclusive enough to allow different types of people to help ensure the child is enrolled in school. There's lots of flexibility, you don't always have to go through a court system, you'll have a notarized document, so there is flexibility to ensure that different types of people can ensure that the child is enrolled. If the child is enrolled with an affidavit, that affidavit is not going to be a good beyond one year, the school district does have flexibility to decide if it's going to be a calendar year or a school year. And if at any point in time, the living situation or conditions change, then you can terminate that affidavit. And so here's the bottom line, the intent of this is not, again, Rockdale is not the courthouse, it's the schoolhouse. So the intent of this is not to put the school district in a predicament by which they become liable. And so our responsibility, and I know we sat right in this very room, and we worked with probably over a thousand families, and many of those families registered, uh, students by way of affidavit. The best we can do is ensure that it's reasonable and it makes sense. Our jobs will not become trying to be an investigator, so we're not going to go behind the process and do something in such a way that makes us liable. We're going to accept the information in good faith if it looks like it makes sense. Now, there are some times that it doesn't make sense. For example, if Santana, if I give my child to Santana using an affidavit, and Santana gives my child, because he can't take care of the child, to Phil, well, then that's a red flag, it doesn't make sense, because while I've given Santana permission to use that affidavit, it's a red flag that now he is giving the child to someone else on an affidavit. So that would be a clear example of a red flag. If there are no ris, no visible red flags, we move forward with that process, and we cannot be held liable in a criminal situation. And so we talked a little bit about what it means to have a registering parent, it's very, very important, because the registering parent is the only guardian that has control to withdraw the child. And so again, remember what I told you, on an application, it could very well mean that my husband and I are listed, I'm the registering guardian by virtue of the fact that I'm first on the application. So if he shows up and he tries to withdraw the students, he's probably not going to have that opportunity. And the reason being is because he's not the enrolling parent. And so I'm sure you're probably asking, what if it is an unfortunate situation, and the parent becomes deceased? And so we have had that to happen, and in those particular instances, you would gather information to show what has happened to the enrolling parent, and why the additional guardian or grandmother or someone else needs to address the withdrawal of the child. The other part is, the enrolling parent must be the parent to make all those decisions. Remember, you saw that screen, and it talked about, if you're going to be my emergency contact, and if you're going to have permission to pick my student up, being my emergency contact. In an ideal world, it works like clockwork, we're not in an ideal world, so there are times that the registering parent may make a decision that may not necessarily be in the best interest perceived of the parent who continues to have those rights. And so here is the bottom line, and it's a big no-no, and I think Santana reminds us of it very, very often, you cannot change the custody of the child by withdrawing the child. So essentially, if you're not the enrolling parent, we protect the child by saying, then someone other than the enrolling parent can't withdraw the child. Because we never want a situation by, by which someone other than the registering parent withdraws that child and takes that child across the country to California. And so the bottom line is, if that child is going to be withdrawn from school, it has to be initiated by the registering or the enrolling parent. And so that's really the larger landscape, it seems to be very, very simple, um, sometimes it's very complex, I will tell you, it's not a black or white situation. The bottom line is, we're always thinking, what is our responsibility based on the law? We're always thinking, what's the right thing to do for the child? And then we're always thinking, how can we be reasonable? So how can we ensure that even when we know that there are instances where there are gaps or concerns, it's not the role of the school district to litigate those concerns, that's what you do at the courthouse? But it is our responsibility to ensure that we're protecting the child, we're clearly, clearly in the loop of who has that responsibility. And even in an instance that the parent continues to have his or her rights, but has not been included on the Infinite Campus account, not included as a guardian, not included as an emergency contact, there is a process to authenticate that you really are who you say you are. And there's a process to create a parent portal, because remember, the parent continues to have his or her rights, unless terminated by the school system. So there's a process to create that parent portal, allow that parent to exist in a non-household account associated with that child, by which that parent can still have access to documents, still have access to being invited to meetings. So there is a process to ensure that if the parent has his or her rights, that the parent can still be included. Is it a perfect world? What happens if you're not included as a pickup? Well, then that would be a great opportunity for me to either, A, if you're just not playing nice, I could, A, take my kids to wherever I live, if I'm in Rockdale, then I still have my rights, I can enroll my own kids, or I can use the legal system to really work out an agreement to say, I really, really need to ensure that I have certain, um, access to my kids. And so are there any questions?
Well, go ahead.
I thought you had to go to probate court. That is scary, you talk about not being in the middle of litigation, all you gotta do is have them bring their orders where they got custody, or, you know, everyone that has to pay support, there's some sort of order.
To the extent that community members have a custody order, we do ask to require it. But the law does allow for individuals by way of affidavit to exchange custody. And, and part of... It may or may not, but, but there's a specific statute that does allow for, as an example, a grandparent and/or a caregiver kinship affidavit for that very reason, in a situation where someone has not gone to court, and/or a parent is incarcerated and/or unavailable, that allows for that transfer. But we do try to vet those affidavits and ensure that they are accurate as best we can.
I have a couple of questions. First off, is this an annual thing that parents have to do, or is it just when you first start in the system?
The expectation is that the affidavit is only good for one year, so it would be an annual thing.
Not necessarily with the affidavit, but let's say, you know, parents are married when the kid starts kindergarten, and they're in Lorraine, or you're four years down the road, they decide to get divorced, is the, whoever registered them have control over saying whether or not that other parent can see them, check them out, whatever?
So it's a great question, and I think what is important to understand, the connection between initial student registration, which is what happened here in this room in many instances, because that over three thousand count of kids were not already enrolled. But then, in addition to that, as you might recall, that other count, every year, we're looking at annual enrollment updates. And so through the annual enrollment updates, essentially it is a repeat of what you've already done for student registration, and that's exactly why annual enrollment updates are important. So if your living conditions have changed, if your guardianships have changed, if you recognize that, hey, all of my emergency contacts now are in South Carolina, and I need to update who will have access to my child. So while they don't have to only do annual enrollment updates, um, at that particular time, they can do it at any point in time they need to, but that's the importance of annual enrollment updates, because it helps us to understand better the needs of the child, the living conditions, who should have access to the child.
And is all of this, is all of it virtual, I mean, on the computer? Or annual enrollment updates, or even new registration, like, I can imagine, if it was some of these grandparents, they have a hard time with the computer and getting it updated. So is there a way that they can copy the information and send it to you?
So ultimately, it would have to be processed through the computer. What we do is, um, there are several computers through those doors in the student registration area. Every day, they have several hours protected for walk-up assistance, and so if there were an instance where someone needed assistance, they could always come here and access those computers. And we've also provided, um, virtual assistance conference call, conference calls as well to talk, um, families through the process.
Any other questions?
Uh, Dr. Smith Dixon and Chairwoman North, I just, I want to thank you for that, for the presentation. I did ask for this presentation to come, because recently there were some concerns that had been expressed by parents. And, and listen, we accept and understand that these can be very difficult and emotional issues, uh, that sometimes are around marital discord and other disagreements. And I don't think that parents intentionally wish to try to ensnare or entangle the district in those issues, but sometimes that's the effect, and we, we want to project empathy, but at the same time say, we can't be pulled into those issues, we have procedures that we have to follow to make sure that we're making the best decisions for the child. So I appreciate what your department is doing in that regard.
Thank you, thank you so much. Next is Officer...
Next is Office of Financial Services, Mr. Keith Hull.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair North, Madam Chair Vice President, Dr. Rhodes, members of the board. I'll be going over the final financial reports for the month of September as well as the final SPOS report for September. All right. The revenue for the month of September was 9.2 million, 26.6 million year-to-date, which was 14.7% of our budget. Last September, we received 9.5 million, 27.2 million year-to-date, which was 15.8% of our budget. Expenditure for the month of September, 15.8, 45.1 million year-to-date, which is 24.4% of our budget. Last September, we expended 14.4 million and 41.3 million year-to-date, which is 24% of our budget. Our outstanding incumbences at the end of September is $2,676,194. Our fund balance is 20.1 million approximately for this year in September. Last September, we were approximately 14.8 million. Our assets are a little over 20 million. Liability, all our liabilities cleared at the end of September and our fund balance is 20.1 million approximately. SPOS 5. SPOS 5 collections are ongoing and will be completed in March of 2024. As we know, the collection rate now will be completed before that. The collection rate of SPOS 5 is currently 121%, so you can see collections are strong. Revenue received thus far, 77.4 million. Expenses thus far, 58 million. And the current balance is 19.5 million in SPOS 5. Any questions?
Keith, if you would go back to the slide that included the incumbences for the end of September. And I know that, Keith, you know that we've gotten questions on this. If, so, for the benefit of our viewing audience and those here, if you could address, what are the incumbences?
Yeah, those are outstanding POs for the rest of the year. Most of our people, go ahead and enter their incumbences now for the rest of the year. So, that's a moving number. So, that number will go down as we go up through the year. So, if you know what your incumbences are for the rest of the year, like for your OT/PT therapist, you'll go ahead and put those in. So, that number is included in that for the rest of the year, for October, November, December, January. So, those are outstanding at the end of September for the obligations for the rest of the year. And like I said, that number is a...
It will fluctuate.
Fluctuate up and down.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Next is Superintendent's update.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'll be brief. I, for the last two days, I've been attending the annual Fall Bootstrap Conference that is sponsored by the Georgia School Superintendents Association. Of course, it's where superintendents from all over the state, as well as other district office leaders and some school-based leaders come together to get official updates from the various departments, from the Georgia Department of Education. Of course, during an election year, there's an added component, which was a part of this annual Fall Bootstrap Conference. We had both gubernatorial candidates and both state school superintendent candidates address the Fall Bootstrap attendees. And there's some very interesting information. Another thing I want to share with you is that, from the Georgia School Superintendent's Association's perspective, but also in concert with some other very important state affiliates or associates like the Georgia School Boards Association, the Georgia Association of Educational Leaders, PAGE and GAE, they've come together and really, they've formed consensus around three major legislative priorities that perhaps not, so surprisingly, have been priorities of ours and been included in our local legislative priorities as a Board of Education. Those three specific broadly are safety, transportation, and the counselor-to-student ratio. But more specifically, what is, they have coalesced around and gained consensus on is that they're asking the legislature to have a permanent line item in the budget for safety so that it's not just always being a crisis, a response to crisis, or merely grants, right? Which we certainly like to take advantage of grants. We did recently and received a grant for $1 million for safety, which is a great thing. And we'll be talking more about that in the weeks and months ahead. But we want to, so that's one of the legislative priorities, a line item in the budget for safety so that you can plan and you can budget and know what you're dealing with. Also, transportation funding, right? Which we all, that's always a part of our own local legislative priorities. And then, the counselor-to-student ratio. The funding ratio has historically been about 1 to 400, 450. However, there was legislation passed, a couple of legislation, general assemblies ago, that actually said in principle that we support the American School Counselor Association recommendation of 1 to 250, but it was never funded, right? So, now, I will tell you that Governor Kemp, when he addressed the group, he said that he's laying aside $25 million in the budget that'll be for that. Now, when you do the math in terms of, say, $60,000 for a counselor, that may be 4 in 16 if I did the math correct. You know, when you look at statewide, but still, that is a start. That's an important start. And so, what the legislative priority is, is for the General Assembly to fully fund the prior legislative mandate, if you will, or legislation that passed of that ratio being 1 to about 250 in terms of funding. Because there are legislators who I think rightly believe that we need the additional counselors for both advisement, but also mental health. And so, that's important. So, I was able to share with John Zoner, the Executive Director for GSSA, that I'm proud to say that these three pieces in one form or another have been part of our local legislative priorities, certainly all of my tenure, and I'm certain prior to my tenure as well as superintendent. So, it was a very productive conference. I also want, I'd be remiss if I didn't congratulate my colleagues who were named finalists for Superintendent of the Year. That's Brian Hightower in Cherokee, it's Fred Williams in Dublin City, it's Trent North in Douglas, and it's Beverly Levine in Oglethorpe. So, actually, you have two very small rural districts in Dublin City and Oglethorpe, and then you have, you have two more metropolitan Atlanta districts in Cherokee and in Douglas. And then, I know each of those individuals very well, too, are quite close friends. And so, we're wishing them luck. It's going to be a competitive process. I also, as a point of personal privilege, want to thank the board collectively for nominating me for Superintendent of the Year. They did feature the Superintendent's of the Year nominees at the conference prominently and commended us as well. So, thank you so much. It was a very productive conference, and one of the things that I can share with you is that I'm going to be talking to our legislative delegation about these legislative priorities that I will tell you, the reason I mention it is because it's almost already has been embraced by a lot of the legislators in terms of, and they're talking about these priorities already, and we're well out from the beginning of the new legislative session. So, of course, we'll be having our annual legislative breakfast on December 13th, right here in the boardroom, and our legislative delegation will be present. At present, we have tentatively scheduled for that, bringing back Tyler Eck, who is a top policy advisor and the legislative liaison for Governor Kemp, but also Miranda Bradford, I'm sorry, previously Miranda Williamson. But Miranda Bradford is the educational policy person. I did share with them, I'm not being at all presumptuous in that that scheduling is subject to change should there be a change in administration. But of course, I have to plan now for the administration that's currently in place, and we can make any adjustments if we need to after November 8. But thank you, Madam Chairwoman, for then told you.
Thank you, Dr. Rhodes. Next item on our agenda is the information section. There's a couple items posted in assembly for your review, the school activity accounts and the school food services financial statements. We'll move on to item number 11 is adopt the minutes. Do we have a motion to adopt the minutes from September of '22? Motion and second to adopt the minutes from September of '22. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Motion carries unanimously. Next is no old business, and we have no new business, but we do have a consent agenda that has 12 items. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Pam Brown. Second, Heather.
Have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Motion carries unanimously. There is no new business discussion and no board discussion tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn? And a second? Have a motion and second to adjourn. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Motion carries unanimously. Good night. Thank you so much.